Okay, we're a bit ahead of schedule tonight, which happens like never. So let's try to keep it that way. So we're agendaized to start right after the last meeting, so we're good as far as that goes. So I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wausau School District. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a couple of things to read now before we get to AGR. The first is that during this meeting, board members will in many cases be hearing information presented to them for the first time. Their responses will, in many cases, be extemporaneous and should not be considered either their final opinion on a matter, nor should any opinion expressed by an individual board member during any meeting be considered the opinion of the board as a whole unless it is presented by the presiding officer as such. A couple of things that didn't get onto the agenda tonight are some proclamations from the Governor's Office, and since these are non-action items, I think we can continue forward and fit those in without running into any agenda issues. The first one reads, whereas we love our public schools week is celebrated annually each year, and this year will be celebrated February 11th through February 15, 2019. Whereas we love our public schools is a time to honor and celebrate public schools and acknowledge our educators who work to ensure that every kid receives a quality education. And whereas the celebration of we love our public schools week encourages all to support our public schools and promote the principle that public education is a pillar of our democracy and vital for our future. And whereas public school districts in Wisconsin are the heart of many communities across our state. And whereas our democracy and civil society depend upon a well-educated citizenry. And whereas public schools ensure a thriving democracy by laying the foundation for good citizenship. And whereas our future success and posterity depend on public education that meets the needs of our children today and our communities and employers tomorrow. And whereas fully funding our public schools at both the state and local levels ensures strong educational outcomes for all students. And whereas the countless accomplishments and talent of the more than 860,000 children attending Wisconsin's public schools deserve to be celebrated. And whereas the state of Wisconsin expresses its gratitude to our dedicated school employees and elected school board members who devote their time and professional lives to educating our kids and promoting a better future of our children and our state. Now therefore, I, Tony Evers, Governor of the State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the week of February 11th through 15th, 2019 as we love our public schools week throughout the state of Wisconsin and commend this observation to all our citizens. So thank you very much for all that you all do. And the second, also from the Governor's Office. Whereas more than 15,000 school bus drivers in the state of Wisconsin travel more than 82 million miles a year in transporting more than 600,000 students to and from school every day. And whereas these drivers and the owners and operators of school buses have promoted and practiced the highest standards to assure the protection of their passengers. And whereas the Wisconsin School Bus Association works to encourage and promote safety in school bus transportation in Wisconsin. And whereas the Wisconsin School Bus Association through the Board of Directors pledges its full and dedicated cooperation with the Department of Transportation's Office of Transportation Safety, Division of Motor Vehicles, and the State Patrol, the State Advisory Council of Highway Safety, the Department of Public Instruction, schools, law enforcement agencies, parent teacher associations, and other organizations in promoting public awareness of the importance of school bus transportation. Now whereas I, Tony Evers, Governor of the State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim February 11th through 15th, 2019 as School Bus Driver Recognition Week throughout the state of Wisconsin and a commitment observation to all of our citizens. So again, for that group of employees, thank you very much. If anybody's here or watching on television, we definitely appreciate every one of those safe miles. So thank you. Okay, and because we began early, we are going to move a few things around in the agenda so that everybody who needs to be here for their various presentations can get into the room. And so now we're heading all the way to item 7A, Achievement Gap Reduction Program Presentation. And so Andrea, go ahead and start us off.
Thank you. The Wausau School District participates in the Achievement Gap Reduction Program offered by the state of Wisconsin. This evening, I'm here with my colleagues, each of our AGR campus principals, who will be sharing with you specific academic achievement data from each of their schools. Just a general overview of the AGR program. The program itself was established to improve student achievement. And as a district, we can choose different performance indicators that we would like to implement at our AGR schools. As a district, we maintain 18 students to one educator in grades K through 3. Or at Thomas Jefferson, we have one team teaching opportunity where we have two teachers in a classroom with up to 30 students. In addition, we offer high-quality instructional coaching at each of our AGR schools provided by our licensed teachers or educators. Those individuals are Darren Catlin, our mass specialist, Lynn Straylo, our Title I literacy coach, and Amy McGovern, our reading specialist. In addition, each school is consistent in the gathered data throughout the year to monitor the academic achievement. That's what you're going to be hearing about tonight. We've chosen as a district a specific assessment called AIMS Web, which monitors that progression and growth of each student in the area of literacy and math from the fall to the winter and the winter to the spring. So each campus principal will share with you updates regarding their fall data and the growth, or maybe some challenging areas where we didn't see growth between fall and winter. At the conclusion of the presentation, the team will also share with you research-based best strategies that we implement across the district at all our elementary schools, which do positively impact student achievement.
Good evening. First of all, you'll see some data from Franklin. I'm Libby White from Spollet Franklin, and that is our reading data. The way the charts are set up is the fall and then winter, and both the red category, which is below 10 percentile, the yellow category that is at or above a 10th percentile, and then the green category at or above the 25th percentile. Of course, this particular year at Franklin, we had a lot of celebrations and some great things that are going on. Of course, we also have some unfinished learning that we're always focused on and working continually to make sure our students are learning the state standards. Particularly, we noticed in first grade, that tends to be a year where some of the actual probes, and I know we've spoke about this before, some of the assessments are changing too. The children are just switching over in some of their reading abilities, so we do tend to see a dip there. We also had some celebrations in second grade and kind of maintained in kindergarten there. I wanted to point out too that luckily for us, we've increased our student body by 20 students since fall to the winter scores. We lost six students withdrew. So for instance, if you want to go ahead and go to the math data, you'll see in kindergarten, we've maintained there, but we did, I wanted to point out that that's, we actually added seven students in kindergarten and seven in third grade, two in first and four in second. So really in kindergarten, third grade, we're talking about a number of different students there that could sway some of those percentages. But we're, one thing our kindergarten team is doing is some rotations and switching some students around to better meet their needs. So we're really working collaboratively and being creative and looking at the research to see what we can do to better meet our students' needs. Anyone has any questions?
So the teachers in a grade level really work as a team, so that when they're doing remediation, they're pulling groups together from all of the first grades.
Yes, yep. And for sure during our, what we're calling the win time, what I need, but also during some of the core time, they're extending some of the groupings and meeting the children's needs.
And those groups are constantly changing based on what kids need.
Yep. They try to keep them the same for about four to six weeks and to make sure that, you know, they've got some data in order to make the groups. But yes, like for instance, right after, in January, after our professional development days, each of the teams got together and looked at the new data and made some different groupings. And then we'll do it again right before spring break.
Well, the only sections do you have for third grade?
Three.
You have three. So you have approximately like 60 students, I'll just round it off.
Um, yep.
Okay, so if I'm looking at this correctly, I'm looking at the at or above 25th percentile. So if I'm looking at this, can you tell us a little bit about what's going on with third grade here? Because if I'm looking at this analysis correctly, a little bit more than half, so let's say 30 of your students are at or above. So what's, I guess, when I see 67% and then drop to 59%, and I take a look at the 10th percentile, and then the below 10, can you just tell us what's going on with third grade?
Sure. Mary, are you looking at the reading or math?
Oh, I'm looking at reading.
Oh, the clicker, sorry. We're looking for the clicker.
That's okay, let's go back so that we're all on the same slide.
Okay, there we go. Correct, so yes, if we factor in some of the new students.
Is that what?
Yep.
Was that the reasoning?
It is some, yes, but also there, we had some data that we weren't getting all the standards taught, and the team has been meeting, and I've been working with them, meeting with our coaches, Lynn Straylo, to make sure that we adjust the instruction in order to make sure the students are meeting those goals.
Another way that we could also look at the third grade data, which is the way we do when we get together as a team and analyze it, if we look at the red data, are those students that were below the 10th percentile in the fall in third grade, that was approximately 10% of our overall third grade population, we'd be wanting a smaller portion of those students to remain in red by mid-year. So that's a celebration that even though it's small, we do see some students moving out of that red category, potentially probably into the yellow. And again, here, we have a little bit higher area of need, we have 24% in the fall, but now we're up to 30.
33.
What is that, 33? 33, thank you very much. And so we're also looking within the bands themselves, and what we would like to do as we progress monitor the students is, they said individual growth goals, so if they are below that target or potentially in the red zone in fall, their target for growth might be yellow. And then the teacher and the students are also progress monitoring them along the way to see if they're meeting that growth. So just another way to look at the data within the different color instructional areas as well.
I assume you're looking, I mean, when you're making decisions on enrichment intervention, that's, I mean, you're looking at kids individually, you're presenting this to us like this, but that's not how, you don't make your decisions based on, wow, this one's 80%, so we can forget about that class. You're looking at every kid individually.
Correct, right.
The really good news about the AGR is we've provided extra funding so we can have these small class sizes. The bad news is when we try to present group statistics like this to us, one or two students throw everything off.
Yes, correct.
So you're collecting and analyzing the statistics with a movement controlled for, in any case. This is just the growth.
Right.
And the assessment changes throughout the year, right? It gets more difficult.
The benchmark does increase, yes.
Yes, correct. Yes, that benchmark has moved, correct.
So can you talk about that? Because I guess one thing-
Hey, this is Teresa. Just let me know when I can ask a question.
Not now.
Never catch, not pot.
So what is the goal? I mean, I see here that it talks about each school will create performance objectives for students, kindergarten through 3, math and reading, identify specific assessment, use to monitor, and identify progress. Great. When I look at the actual results, you know, pick a grade, it doesn't matter, right, 74 to 43 for above 25th percentile, how do you know if this is working? Because if I'm looking at this from the outside, I'm saying, I'm not going to pay for this.
Right.
Don't take that the wrong way, but I'm just saying, how do we know what is success and how is it defined in this realm?
Right. One thing we do is have multiple measures, you know, so for instance, when I would see that, then it'd be like, okay, let's get down to exactly who those students are, you know, have they been at Franklin, were they in our numbers? What is their performance in the classroom on a day-to-day basis? Most likely, I know, for instance, in first grade, they made quite a few adjustments in title and ELL groups. Sometimes students will have, you know, get through kindergarten and know other letters and sounds, but then when it comes to actually putting them together and reading words, they might start to struggle. So, but using multiple measures, getting down and looking at each student, and luckily, you know, there are just, you know, 47 in first grade so that we can really meet their needs.
And excuse this question, it's just complete ignorance, is there even a thing such as holding a child back if they don't meet minimum thresholds for reading or math?
Well, our district has a retention policy.
Retention, yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds better.
So, you know, there's a lot of research that really only is that effective at the really young levels for students. But probably more so looking at what are we missing. I know our literacy department has been great about making sure that we have more assessments to use. There's one called the PASS. We've just been able to, you know, get down and know exactly what are the needs of the child.
You know, Keith, maybe this is something to consider in kind of the strategic plan is how, because when I look at this, it's like, I don't know whether it's an awesome job, or do better, or this is okay. It's hard to interpret.
Yep.
I care more about what you say than looking at this chart.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe reframing this in terms of goal, objective, whatever, in your larger group may be meaningful to the broader group.
It is problematic releasing this to the public undigested.
True.
Because they can well say, well, this school, I don't want my kid going to this school, I want them going to that school, and they don't know what they're looking at.
Sorry, the purpose of this presentation is truly, it is a requirement of the DPI that we follow their template and share with you the data that we choose that comes out of that screener, which again, we've chosen as the AIMS Web. So we could put together a more comprehensive overview of multiple measures. For those of you that have been on the board for a few years, that used to come in front of you when each campus principal presented their school learning objective, they would come forward and give you a comprehensive presentation of all of the data that they analyzed with their educators in their building, and they set them down to what's called an SLO. And to Pat, to your question about the benchmark, every school sets a different benchmark, really dependent on what their baseline data is when they collect that in the fall. So some might come in with benchmark data in the high 40s or 50s, and so their end target or benchmark by the end of the year might be close to 90% of all students fluent or proficient readers. In other schools, if their baseline data in the fall comes in in the low 20s, then you use kind of some different formulas to identify what their benchmark is. So overall, when we talk about response to intervention, we would want a target of approximately 80% overall of all of our students reading at their benchmark level by the end of that grade. But we do differentiate by school because that baseline data is so very unique to the school and student populations. That's an excellent question.
Just one last clarification, does DPI ever come in and say, look at, here's your AGR schools, you haven't met certain requirements over so long, so we're no longer going to fund that school this way? Do they do that?
I don't know that it would come through the AGR program and the funding associated with it, but it is tracked through our district's school report cards. And if we had a school, or even a district for that matter, that was not meeting the state criteria through that process, you could be identified as a school or district in need of improvement. And then the DPI would work very closely with us, probably do a very comprehensive audit, and then give us some steps for improvement. We've not experienced that in our district.
Okay, thank you.
Even if you added in a bunch of other assessments and presented those to us as well, you'd still have, you'd still be very limited by just the numbers though. I mean, you talk about having 47 kids in first grade, and you're trying to divide it into thirds, and if three kids move in, or three kids move out, it can be, all the percentages are off, either good or bad. So it's pretty limited in terms of what you can actually present in this format.
We've taken a pretty big intervention at Franklin after piloting the MAP assessment, which is three times a year, and that measures growth and proficiency, and where this is just measuring proficiency. And so this year, all students at Franklin took a fall, excuse me, first through fifth grade took a fall MAP and a winter, so we've been able to look at some really detailed data. And we're really excited about some of our lower achieving students that maybe would fall in that red, but they all, they showed very large growth. So that has been a nice tool that we added because just like all of you, you know, I, we've got to kind of get to the bottom of what we're missing and making sure that we're teaching the children and they're meeting the targets.
Okay. Teresa, thanks for the cough reminder. We have a board member, Teresa Miles, who for some reading reason I cannot possibly understand is somewhere warm tonight. It seems to me to be, it's a moral issue, Teresa. But Teresa, you know, feel free to chime in when you can, because I know you can't really read the room where you're at, and we don't want to forget you. So do you have a question?
My turn to ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay, first of all, Andrea has to use her teacher voice, because I can barely hear a thing she's saying. And I know that the people giving the presentation don't have a microphone, but they're all going to have to use their teacher voices. So that's what I need so I can hear. I have a couple of things that I'm going to ask each principal, and Libby is at the disadvantage because she's first, but after coming back from the state school board convention, big thing is, what percentage of our children really enjoy reading? And I know that there's no measurement in any of this data, but that's something I think we have to constantly keep track of. Are we instilling in the children the love of reading? And so that's just something I want you to be thinking about. Number two, are the teachers in your school allowed to use the bookroom? And for those new teachers that don't even know anything about the bookroom, is anyone helping them understand how it works? And lastly, what kind of reading is happening at home? And I hope it's more than that little sheet of a copy of the story that they've been reading, because parents constantly tell me that their child has nothing to read and they don't know how to appropriately provide things for them to read. So those are my three questions for every principal. They can make it three, but those are the things that I'm wondering about.
Okay, I will start. Number one, and I'd like to say that 100% of our students enjoy reading. If we don't do, if they maybe say they don't at some point, then we haven't done a good job of finding the materials that they are either at their level or at their interest, I guess that I would say. Secondly, the bookrooms, absolutely, all of our teachers are using our bookrooms. Amy McGovern has done a nice job of relaying out to all of our teachers, and we've reviewed it a number of times. Our new teachers, our mentor system for the initial educators is wonderful, and both of my brand-new teachers have a mentor right in the building or close by that's been helping them with the bookrooms. And someone want to help me with third question three?
Reading at home.
Reading at home. You know, I think that that's always been a challenge in all my years in education. I know, you know, we're at an advantage, our Franklin families are so close to the Marathon County Library, but we, I know, we had some donations, and teachers were sending books home for gifts, and we have book giveaways on every family event that we have, and always looking for different funding sources in that to make sure that families have books at home.
Thank you, and thank you for speaking up. I can hear you perfectly.
Oh, good. Teresa, it's Andrea, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, fantastic. I want to share with you, because I know you've brought forth your thoughts around the bookroom the last several years, and I just want to share with you some of the things that we've done to be very proactive in continuing to utilize that resource and help it to complement both our Super Kids and our Wonders resources that we use on a daily basis. So last year, I met with Amy McGovern and Lynn Straylo, and we actually drafted quite a comprehensive communication plan to share with all of our educators at each of the grades to identify how they could incorporate and continue to use the bookroom and the resources that are available. And then this fall in October, Lynn and Amy joined an elementary principal team meeting, and they went through that entire document. And then they offered to come and join each school's faculty meeting sometime within a month following that elementary principal meeting, where they could actually meet face-to-face with the entire faculty, go through that literacy document, have a Q and A opportunity. So if there was any misunderstanding or confusion over where the bookroom and those resources complement our current resources, they would actually be there alongside the principal to be able to respond, to answer questions. And/or then, I know they offered in many buildings to come back and actually work individually with teachers who might want to go deeper in how you utilize the two different resources. So I'm sorry if I've been remiss in not sharing that with not only you but the board, but we have been cognizant of your thoughts around that area. So each principal can go deeper into your questions as their turn, but I just thought you might want to hear from a global perspective what we're doing to make sure all of our educators understand how the two work together, the core resources, Super Kids and Wonders, and the resources in the bookroom.
Thank you, Andrea. And Pat would have been disappointed had I not brought up the bookroom.
Yeah, I would have, I was waiting.
Thank you for the question, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity for me to share our GD Jones information with you, our data. Looking at, I'm going to jump right over to the right column, but realize there's going to be a couple of areas that I'm going to touch on with regard to the 10th, at or above or below the 10th percentile as well. Looking at kindergarten, traditionally, historically at Jones, but other buildings as well, we have realized a nice growth between the fall and the winter scores with our kiddos, and it's just really nice to see that consistency happening year after year after year. As Andrea mentioned earlier, it's, we really want to see a reduction in the red and the green area, because that tells us that hopefully what we are doing with the students is working. It's one measure, but it is, you know, it is something that we use to look at to ensure that we're doing what we need to be doing. Again, at first grade, pretty much we maintained. Second grade, again, we saw a nice increase in our reading scores. Third grade, we saw a little bit of a dip with regard to the students maintaining that at or above benchmark, meaning in the green area. In January, when we met as a PLC to discuss our, I'm sorry, our mid-year data, one of the things that we did discuss with regard to our third grade students, and I brought that conversation back earlier today with one of my third grade team members, was what they noticed, that some of the students that they would have expected to score better than they did on the assessment, they were a little concerned as to whether, you know, like I mentioned, it's a one-shot deal. It's, you know, a time shot, or time, one measure in time. And so what the third grade teachers did after we met on that Friday was they went back and they administered a progress monitoring probe with the students, the ones that they were, actually, they conducted it with all the students in third grade, and they noticed that some of those students they had concerns with actually scored around where they would have expected them to do, to score. So that is one of the ways in which we're constantly monitoring our growth and/or not growth at each of the grade levels and discussing what we need to do to ensure that the kiddos are continuing to grow at the rate that we would like to see them grow. Moving on to math, again, at each of the grade levels, we realized some, well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that, not at each of the grade levels. At kindergarten, we fell a little bit with math, and that comes back to, as the kindergarten year goes on, they are introduced skills that are completely new to them, and it's, as the year goes on, they're starting to learn how to add, and they're starting to learn how to manipulate the numbers and things like that. And so while that little bit of a dip is a little bit concerning, it's, you know, it's kind of expected at this point in time. What we really are hoping for is at the end of the school year, through the use of our number talks, each of the classroom teachers at GD Jones is conducting number talks with the students that will help solidify the skills, the concepts that the teachers are working on in the classrooms. And the hope is that we would see that, any of the grade levels where we've seen a decrease, we would see that grow again. So I'm going to jump right to third grade, because we did realize growth again at first and second grade, although not as much at second grade. But at third grade too, a little bit of a dip in our math scores. Third grade is a grade level where we are working this school year, all school years, but in particular this school year, we're focusing on those third grade students and preparing them for the forward exam, because this will be the first time that they're taking that forward exam. So one of the ways in which we are working with the kiddo is not only with small group within the classroom during math time, but during win time, you know, what they need, getting some additional support there if they're not already. getting some additional support there if they're not already going to another intervention as to receive another type of an intervention, just continuing to work on the concepts that they're working on right within the classroom to just keep drilling and hoping that we can bring it on home for them so that they can get to where we would want them to be. Overall, mid-year, I will just say K5 with regard to GD Jones data, we are at 70% of our kiddos at or above benchmark with regard to AIMS Web and we did set our end of year SLO with regard to math at 75%. And so we're confident with the, with the strategies we have in place now that we will be able to meet our math goals.
Questions for me?
I just have a comment. I mean, what happens between the fall and the winter is the goalpost gets moved. And just because our kids don't make it all the way to the goalpost, they're still making progress. So I don't, saying that the, it was a dip, I don't, I just, so I think it makes it look negative when it really isn't. They're making progress, it's just hasn't been as much as the goalposts was set.
So Jane, thank you, truly thank you for saying that. One of the things I talk with, with my staff is those goals that we set each school year for ourselves, but also for our kiddos, there's something for us to work toward, right? And we may or we may not meet them. But as far as I'm concerned, any sort of a growth, whether it's one point, two points, five points, that is something to celebrate with the students and with each other because something that you are doing with those kiddos is absolutely working. And so I constantly am honing or drilling home to staff that it is, it's a celebration and we have to remember that it is a growth, that that target does move. And also at third grade, like some, like Libby had mentioned, we also, and I neglected to mention this, we had a lot of new students move in at the third grade level. There was one week where Candace, my administrative assistant, was like, Robin, we have another third grader, where should we place her? We have another third grader, where should we place her? So I do know that that does definitely have an effect on your mid-year scores if those students were not in the district and taking the assessment in the fall time as well.
I think we shot all our darts at Libby, so.
I know.
There's going to be a fight next time.
I'm at the end, this is going great.
I bet Teresa has a question for me though. We've got three questions.
Well, yeah, the only thing I would, I would ask on Robin is, Robin, do you have any great plans for reading at home with your students?
You know, Teresa, I, we do what we can, you know, everything I'm going to tell you is going to sound exactly the same as what Libby talked about. My teacher, the teachers at Jones do utilize the bookroom. I know for a fact that they are sending books home as it connects to the literacy programs for students to read at home. I know that our, some of the classroom teachers are asking students to, with their families, to fill out a reading log, so they're asked to read each night. I do know that we are reading right within, I know it's not home, but we are reading within the classroom to try and help facilitate that love of reading by modeling that reading ourselves. So we're doing everything that we possibly can to try and help students and families understand the importance of reading at home. Like Franklin at Jones, when we have family events, we are giving away free books to students so that we, they've got that material in their hands.
Well, I don't think I could ask for anything more and I'm glad to hear that you do send books home. So what if some of them don't come back? They don't do any good collecting dust in the bookroom.
I couldn't agree more.
Must be doing business.
I couldn't agree more with you, Teresa.
Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
Andrea, I have a question.
Sure.
So Robin mentioned how she had that week and there's just third graders piling in. With this 18 to one ratio, what's the smallest class size that exists in the AGR schools?
You can give me another presentation or so, I can get into the current model and I can let you know.
Oh.
But I'd have to, I mean, I would not want to make a guess, so if you don't mind, I can just take a look and let you know what's.
Sure, that's fine. I was just curious what would happen if she's capped, or if any of the schools are capped and they, you know, we have two, three sections of first grade, all 18 students. What happens then?
Let me look to my colleague, Andrea behind me and then our, Mr. Services Director.
So your, your question is if we're capped at, say Franklin, at third grade, all three sections, 18, then we district place students.
Okay, and would they go to another AGR school to have that kind of benefit of the small class?
Most of the time, yes, depending on if we're capped, like this year where we're running into a unique situation where a lot of our east side schools, and we do look at east side, west side too, because then once they go to middle school, we want them to be with their peers.
Sure.
But we are running into an issue this year where first grade is pretty much capped across the east side. So, yeah, we sometimes have to get creative, but we do put them at schools that would be very similar to theirs, to their home schools.
Sure, thanks. Well, Robin, I was in your school recently, your staff extended an invitation for World Read Aloud Day.
Yep.
And so I came and I ran into one of your first grade classes and it was really a breath of fresh air to come into a class that size as opposed to some of the other elementary schools that the class sizes feel like they're versing at the seams.
Thanks for coming in. I think, Jeff, you came as well, correct? Thank you very much.
Yeah, it was the best thing I did that whole week.
And the reason I want to say that too is because quite frankly, I think as the board we don't get a lot of invitations and so I'm just putting it out there to encourage a few more invitations, but thank you.
Yeah.
But no, I did want to point that out with the class size, what a difference. It was just very noticeable.
Yeah, thank you. So Tricia, I have an answer to your question.
Okay.
Just doing a quick view as I pulled up our current enrollment and again, it can fluctuate day by day. In AGR schools, the lowest classroom section that we have right now would be at 15 in kindergarten, so it ranges from 15 to 18. 14 a low in first grade, so again, 14 to 18. 13 a low in one school for second grade, and then 14 in third grade. So really, 13 in one of our second grade classrooms and one of ours.
And then as far as special programs, do those all exist within AGR schools?
Yes.
For example, medically fragile, is that still at Lincoln?
Yes.
Program, special programs of that nature.
Sure, that's a very specialized program and it does only exist, or we do offer that opportunity at Lincoln. We also offer the care program in its totality at Health Mountain if students through their AEP process are tested as well. And again, I look to Judy, but I believe that we offer other special education, specialized programs at all other schools.
I think you did a great job capturing.
Well, is Grant, is Grant still with the students?
The hearing program is now primarily at River View.
Right.
They do have some different, at different buildings, but the bulk of the programs.
And where was the deaf and hard of hearing program? Was it in an AGR school?
Prior to that, it was a grant.
I guess my concern is, right, and that's what I thought, and I'm wondering why that moved. It seems like these kind of specialized programs, the students would potentially benefit in that smaller setting.
The demographic of those students moved. Most of the students coming in were River View students and we had the facilities and the, kind of like the newer building infrastructure for the sound systems and that was their home school.
Teresa, can you hear?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not using, I'm sorry, I don't think I used my teacher voice, Teresa, I apologize.
We also offer the visually impaired program, which, one of them used to be a grant, does it still remain a grant?
We have largely at grant. We also have, we really, the programs are with the students.
Right.
And we now have a number of WSAWES, so Dawn, the teacher, we have one VI teacher, she has situated a lot of WSAWES too because that's where our students are.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out those programs and the enrollment numbers and where this, where this all falls.
Sure.
And I can speak, Tricia, those, those populations have tugged and flowed at Grant in my time there and in some instances, all of that group, say VI or DHH, was represented by completely non-grant attendance zone students and at times it had been represented by largely grant attendance. So it just, at this point in time, every VI student would not live within our attendance zone.
Sure.
So still got the services there. So it's just kind of, depends on where they're living.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Chris Nyman, Prisway Grant, if you haven't gathered that by now. Lots to celebrate in the area of literacy. I'll try to be as brief as I can. Like all of the other schools across the district, we too are implementing a change in how we're providing kindergarten instruction in the area of literacy through the use of rotations and does allow for some additional structured play in the hopes of developing and supporting the development of oral language, recognizing its, its tight correlation to the acquisition of early literacy skills. Really, really impressive growth at first grade, also recognizing that mid-year in grade one is the first time that students are assessed on true authentic reading, so they're not just being assessed on foundational skills, but they actually are tasked with an actual reading passage for the first time. Second grade kind of held strong and a very small dip represents probably one student and at second and third grade both, between fall and winter, in this particular year, we had a lot of students out and a smaller number of students in, so kind of unique. So I feel a little bit like at grade two and three, both on the ELA side and both on the math side, it's not necessarily an apples to apples comparison because these are small populations of students and we had a large number come out and then a smaller number of those students that came back in. If you look in the area of math, you'll see there that we saw fairly significant, significant dip in performance at grade two. When we kind of pull those scores apart, and I think Pat gave voice to this earlier, just in terms of, you know, what, what exactly does all of this mean? So it has to be more meaningful than just looking at the numbers and saying, oh, you dropped, that's bad, oh, you went up, that's good. So part of this data really does help to inform our systems within our buildings and how we're addressing the supports that we're providing at each of those grade levels. So based on this data, we are allowed to, yes, look at individual growth for individual students and I'm happy to say that in every case, at every grade level, K5, over 95% of students experience some growth. So that growth may be represented by only one or two words, one or two sounds, or in the area of math, maybe represented by only one or two points on any of those given subskills. But in most cases, all students do experience growth. They just might not get quite as far as the goalpost has been moved, so Jane gave voice to that earlier. So you do see, recognizing that we did see a dip in performance there, third grade teachers and the team at third grade, including intervention folks, also pulled apart some of that data and started to look more closely at which of those subskill students fell or performed more poorly on in the winter benchmark and identified that the concepts and application piece has proven more challenging. So certainly during their win time have embedded more opportunities to engage, for students to engage in those kinds of activities in the hopes of bolstering those skills before we move into our spring assessment. Again, I'll feel much better with some increased stability between now and spring in terms of reporting what that overall data looks like for the second and third grades, recognizing that we did see again, a large number of students that came out and a smaller number of students that came in and enrolled at those two grades. Teresa, I can very quickly respond to your bookroom question so you don't have to cough and make us all remember that you're there. The one, we certainly are doing all of the things that they mentioned at Franklin and GD Jones. The one other thing that I think maybe we have not mentioned is just the very expansive series of resources that students have access to digitally through our Super Kids resource and portal and our Wonders portal. So students certainly have access to all of those resources that they would be and are encouraged to read at home. So because all of our students in K5 are one-to-one environments, they are certainly able to bring their iPads home and they also have access, in addition to the bookroom resources that we provide and individual classroom teachers send home that are aligned and support the work of our Super Kids and Wonders resource, they also have access to those digital resources that I know are probably used, utilized even more often by students.
Great, but you know what, I'm going to add to that. They call it lap reading, it doesn't necessarily mean the child needs to be in your lap, but that interaction between an adult and reading is so valuable and I'm glad they're doing some reading on the iPad, but that's not the most important form of reading. So I'm glad that you're doing many different things and I thank you for that, but I'm going to continue to hope that people are going to be reading to their children. So that's all I have to say.
Okay.
You know, Chris, I'm glad you mentioned that because my, my son brought up this application, it must be a WSAWES School District app, where it's reading the book to him, kind of like our audiobooks, right? And I said, that's not reading. You know, so I got really upset with him, so I made him read my Michelle Obama book. And you know, he's probably like, what am I, why am I reading this? But I guess, do you see value in the audiobooks? Do you think that it's?
Yes.
Well, at an adult age, okay, but I'm just thinking about my 10-year-old. I feel like it's cheating.
Comprehension is higher when you're listening to it. Also, you have a perfect model. So you're listening and you're.
So I should encourage him to keep listening to.
I think it's kind of, I mean, there are, like there, and there are five essential components of reading, so is that probably helping his phonics and phonetic awareness skills? Probably not, but is it increasing his vocabulary? I would argue yes. Is it increasing his opportunity to become a more fluent reader because he's provided with a really consistent model? Yes. And are there great opportunities if you are engaging even in a digital read with your child on the iPad and they're on your lap to engage in comprehension discussions that develop their oral language and develop their comprehension skills? Yes. So even though, yes, there's nothing like having a book in your hand, I agree, but certainly there are opportunities for them to still be working on those components of reading that will help to make him a stronger reader. So to short answer your question is yes, encouragement.
Okay, I'm going to take this home tonight and say, Ms. Jepson and Mr. Diamondson, you can continue to take on your audiobooks.
You can do both.
Yes.
I think any reading is good reading.
Well, I guess that leaves me. I'm Lynn Tug and I'm the new principal over at Hawthorne Hills, so thank you for having me today. Hawthorne Hills has shown strong positive growth in the area of reading and as you can see in kindergarten at Hawthorne Hills is at, 84% is at or above the 25th percentile. So this particular growth, you know, could be because of the new rotations that have been implemented, which is that solid half an hour literacy for six or less kids at the kindergarten level. So I just wanted to point that out. In the third grade level, it's just like, you know, my colleagues have said, there's been lots of in and out at Hawthorne Hills, so that can affect the, the data that's shown there. Okay, moving on to math. Hawthorne Hills math data also shows some positive gains and over 70% of the K through second graders are at or above the 25th percentile.
That's pretty great.
This is the third year that Hawthorne Hills has been doing number talks, so that facilitates math instruction and links it to the real world, so that, that's, you know, a real growth point for those students. Again, grade three has shown some, you know, has some challenges with students transferring in and out of the district. And attendance also has been affecting some of these, some of this data as well.
All right, well, continue on. Kellye Holy-Jeppson, principal over at Lincoln Elementary. So I was reading through my graph and I'm like, wow, we had 0% at the below 10th percentile. So I went back and redid my calculations because I'm like, that's probably not even a possibility. I did update the Lincoln slide to reflect better math. So we had 13% at below the 10th percentile in the fall and we are at the 18th percent right now. But the fall and winter in terms of kindergarten, we have gone from the 70th to the 75th percentile that are at or above the 25th percentile. I did spend quite a lot of time, I was very fortunate in that Andrea helped me get to the OSA Data Academy for administrators and I spent quite a bit of time analyzing data and different aspects of the data. And so one thing that we're really focused on at Lincoln this year is the achievement of our EL students. We've noticed that that's been an area that we really need to focus on, both in reading and in math at all grade levels. So we are really working on the vocabulary portion in the math, math area. So. So that's been very interesting for me to study. Doesn't relate necessarily to this, but it's definitely something that I have noticed a trend in. We have focused a lot of our attention on the math this year and based on the OSA data that I have collected. Grade three has shown great progress and we have been fortunate to have Heidi Imhoff come on as a title math support person, which not all of the schools are fortunate to have right now. So we are very fortunate to have Heidi and she has really been focused on the third graders. And I think that that is showing hugely in our data. They have been struggling and so we're giving them extra time and attention. In terms of the questions that Teresa asked, hopefully our students enjoy reading. I enjoy reading. Our bookrooms are available. And I have to give kudos to our PTO because they had a cozy reading night on one of the coldest winter nights in Wausau. And they had a book exchange as well as handed out free books to kids. And they had Woody, the woodchuck come in. They had badge come in. The school SRO officer dog. So it was a great night to promote reading. So it's nice to see that our parents are promoting reading with our Lincoln PTO. Any questions for Lincoln? And I forgot to answer her question. So I'll answer her question for her. At Hawthorne Hills, our bookroom is open, being used. We have a strong book bowl team and they meet on Thursday morning, yeah, Friday mornings. And so that's been a strong, you know, draw for students to read. And just recently, our PTO had a read-a-thon. And so they got pledges to read so many minutes and they keep track and then they hand it in at the end. And we also have free books outside the library at all times for kids to take home.
Thank you. I'm glad you're doing those things.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Brent Johnson, Thomas Jefferson, principal. I'll use my teacher voice here. I hope you can hear me fine. I think...
Finally, yes. I'm clear.
I was a football coach too. I've never been accused of being really quiet. So it's my time to shine, apparently. You know, we've talked a lot about these numbers and, you know, you can see them for yourself. I think that we've been doing a lot of great things at Thomas Jefferson and the numbers show that. A lot of things to celebrate. I think the comments previous are important that we don't look at this kind of meta-level data. There's a lot of really important work that goes on in our PLCs weekly and in our data meetings that we break this and other assessments down to the individual student, really look at what makes them tick, both, you know, mental health, academic achievement, who they get along with, all sorts of different criteria that we filter through to make groups, very small groups, and use all of every resource that we have in the building during that win time to target our students and move them forward. You know, we can't present that type of stuff at the board level because of privacy and those kind of things. So we're left with the meta-level data here. But I think that's the really important thing that I would like to get across to the board is how much we work at this and really dig down into every kid, finding a group for them, finding skills that they need to work on, and then trying to make the instruction as engaging and different as possible. So we talk about different modalities. You know, some are kinesthetic learners and we need to be up and moving and doing those kind of things. Others are more tactile. Others are auditory. Others, you know, learn by doing or learn the hard way, some of us. So all of those examples are things that we talk about. So as we look at the data, I think that, you know, that's where I can add to the conversation as it stands right now. A lot of great people that are well-trained with coaching support and time to do the work. To answer your questions, Teresa, I hope that we are helping kids to bring a lifelong love of learning, specifically reading, to the table. I think that is one of our major goals. Books at home, we have a Kulanis kindergarten program that comes in and reads and they give kids books to take home as part of their backpack program. We have an upcoming read-a-thon going on and we've also had parents in our school participating in our ELA and math classes to learn what goes on and hopefully bridge some of that gap on what we're looking for on a nightly basis for reading with your children and fostering that love of reading. And the bookroom, we have reading coaches and we bring that up at our PLC and team meetings constantly to try and get new and engaging materials in the hands of the kids.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
I think the one thing that nobody mentioned was the library. The library is so important and our librarians are so important. And sadly, we've lost most of our aides, if not all of our aides, to cuts. And I don't know what we have...
May I just state that it's wonderful that Wausau still has our librarians? The district I came from no longer did. So I really celebrate our librarians.
When Lincoln School opened up in 1970, they had the first library. Before that, we used to have to walk to the library a couple of times a year. And they didn't have walls either. But that was the first library and I'm thrilled that we have fought to keep our librarians. And I hope we may, and maybe we'll get more aides.
So I have a question for you, Andrea. It's been reported that some Wausau elementary schools have a high churn rate. And then we've heard that tonight as well from a few schools, the amount of students coming and going. And there are studies that, you know, having to switch schools once in a year, you can be six months behind for that student. If that student has to switch two or three times, they could lose a whole year. So how are we identifying these students? I mean, are there extra supports for those students in these schools that have been reported on and identified?
Well, can I speak just a little bit? Lincoln has been known to be a bit transient. But I think the district has done really well with the homeless students. So those students that we know are homeless, the district has done a great job of providing busing for so that they can maintain that consistency. It doesn't necessarily work with those who are moving from place to place, but those that we do know are homeless, the district has been watching out for and taking care of. The social workers have been a huge part in that and making sure that we're aware of who is homeless and who needs that transportation.
And for families that move, or students moving between family members during the school year, is it possible to counsel the parent's guardians to keep the child in the same school if possible? Is that something that we could address with them? Is it an option?
So, is it okay? Sure. So a lot of times, Jeff, that's exactly what happens. Like if a parent is moving, right, and they're taking their child with them, a lot of times what they'll do is they'll fill out an in-district enrollment form, requesting for the remainder of the school year for their child to remain at that building for obvious reasons. I mean, the comfort level of the student, the teachers already know them, et cetera, et cetera. And then, you know, starting the new year at their new place. But Tricia, also to go back to your question about the students coming in, we conduct when we do receive a records request from a student who is outside of the district. In-district transfers are a little bit easier to help those kiddos transition if the parents do make the choice to have them attend their home school with the move. It's the out-of-school ones where sometimes that's a little bit more challenging. But what we do when we receive the records, once we've requested them, is we, people services staff at Jones will conduct a file review and they'll look through the Q and file and they'll, you know, look for areas of concern or areas that we really need to be aware of as we transition that student to our, let's say, G. Jones, to help them become comfortable, you know. So that is one way in which we are meeting the needs of those students that are transferring in and out.
Yeah, I think just to go back to Pat's earlier point, it does kind of feel like an incomplete picture with the slides. I don't know if there's a way to address a little bit more going forward so that we can have a fuller picture.
Well, I, at a convention that I attended, we talked about foster kids and that it was more important that they remain in their home school no matter how many different placements they have. And I imagine that kind of affects our kids that are moving because most of these moves are related to poverty. And they alluded at this convention that for foster kids at least, that there was some federal dollars somewhere to help with the busing situation.
There is, there is. Yep, I take care of that and homelessness. And we, even if they're over in a foster home, we send them here to make sure that that stays necessary for that family.
Because I'll be, I mean, there are all different components of these scores.
There is, yes.
And another system that we've created is our implementation of a guarantee of viable curriculum, which is very beneficial for a student or a family. If they do have to experience a move and they're within our own district, we can guarantee within a week or two, up to 10 days, a student that might come from, let's say, Granton, maybe moving to Riverview, they would not miss any of the curriculum that's being offered at that grade level. It's within, again, about a 10-day period depending on if the school might be a little farther ahead or they might be. But that's the really significant importance of a guarantee of viable curriculum so that a student isn't going to miss. Now, if they are coming from out of state, we do a lot of research. We also administer many of these same assessments. So right away, we get a baseline and we can start to do some comparisons and realize that we can respond very quickly. So very good point. This was our last slide, just to capture kind of some of the global things that we're doing as a district. And each principal maybe has one or two sentences. And I just touched on briefly guarantee of viable. I'm not sure who was going to speak to that. If there's anything else you'd like to add around?
Just that we've had the Wisconsin Institute of Math come in quite a bit so that all the teachers around the district and administrators are getting some really good training as to what good math instruction looks like and that we're really aware of what the math standards are through achieve the core.org. We spend a lot of time going back and looking at the standards and making sure that all those students' needs are being met.
And I think it's fitting that I would talk a little bit about professional learning. Colleen alluded to the fact that we have across the district sort of universal professional learning that we've provided for all K-5 staff, to include special ed, has been around or has been provided by the Mathematical Institute of Wisconsin. And there has been a distinct focus on developing a stronger understanding of the need to implement and incorporate standards for mathematical practice and daily instruction, particularly around creating opportunities for mathematical discourse for students so that they have increased levels or increased number of opportunities to explain their thinking and to be able to think and reason abstractly and quantitatively. So that has been embedded within daily practice within the 75-minute math block as well as number talks. Again, increasing the number of opportunities that students receive each day to engage in mathematical discourse to ensure that we are addressing, in addition to the content that is embedded in daily lessons, also those opportunities to get at those additional mathematical practice standards that we know are equally important.
We've done this really fun and engaging work this year with technology integration to use it and focus on using it as a creation tool and to help foster that communication between parents and their teachers and then between the students and their teachers as well.
So next is the response to intervention or the RTI framework. It's a three-tiered or multi-tiered framework to allow classroom teachers, interventionists, people services staff, myself to come together and work toward meeting the needs of the students with regard to interventions, both academically and behaviorally. Each of our buildings meets weekly to discuss RTI. And one week is RTI-A where we're discussing academics regarding students. And the next week is RTI-B where we're discussing behavior interventions that we can use to help target specific skills where students need additional support in. Multiple measures of data was mentioned a number of times. I would just like to add again that in the second year of implementation of EducLiver and that Education Department and People Services have put together a kind of at-a-glance sequence of making sure that our teachers are using, are learning new skills and also using that tool to help us look at data.
And our PLCs continue to use data to enhance the student performance by, you know, identifying, planning, and evaluating best practice. PLCs focus on, you know, standard math standards and use the curriculum as a guide. And then the PLCs are also continuing that work done at the Math Institute to also implement best practice. I just want to thank you all for not just looking at the numbers and realizing these are kids we're working with, not numbers.
You have no idea how hard that is.
I know. I do know. But thank you. I appreciate that.
Quantifiable measures is often a form of laziness. Right? And so I think, I hope that we get that by now. The, in years past, we failed to recognize, or it's been brought to our attention that we failed to recognize, great performance jumps in schools. Now, one of the problems with that whole way of thinking about it is from what you all have relayed tonight, you might even see a drop that still represents an awful lot of hard and actually success with that class in that school. And so I think we don't, we want to be careful not to single individual grades or individual principals, teachers out when we know that everybody worked very hard and the numbers don't really tell the story about where you're having your greatest successes. And so I think we want to recognize all of that hard work. So thank you very much for all that you're doing. Mike, can you bear with us just a little bit longer? Okay. Because we have two resolutions of commendation to give and these teachers are here with their families, which include young children. So I think we want to get them, only get them to bed before we deal with our high school students and the fact that they have to get ready to do homework.
Remember, you can sleep in tomorrow.
You volunteered for this, Pat. Okay, so I would like to, again, move in the agenda out of order to resolutions of commendation. And so let's have Elena Clark and Patricia Zemke come forward. Can somebody...
They're coming in with their families.
They're coming.
Yep. And so Elena and Patricia, you want to bring your kids up?
They can, or they can sit and watch. It's okay.
Whatever works best for you all. That's the safest thing for us to do. Yeah, so Elena and Patricia, please come forward. I have something to read off here, so I won't stand up yet, but you guys have to stand up in front of the cameras a little bit.
Whatever that is.
All right. Well, thank you very much. There's our cameras, so while I embarrass you with all of your accomplishments. Okay, so this, in the order that I was giving it, Elena Clark. Elena is an advanced placement psychology and world history teacher at Wausau West High School and was nominated for the resolution of commendation by Wausau West High School Principal Jeb Steckbauer. Jeb, I'll just say your words for you.
Jeb had to leave.
Jeb had to leave. Well, that's even better. Jeb Steckbauer states, "Elena's stellar teaching, leadership at Wausau West, commitment to the profession of teaching, and most importantly, the positive impact she has had on her students are all traits that contributed to her ability to obtain National Board certification. Elena is reflective in her practice and consistently develops and delivers excellent lessons which inform and challenge our students' thinking. The strong relationships she develops..." The strong relationships she develops with her students are measured by their positive comments and the communication that continues even after they leave Wausau West. Thank you, Elena, for all you do for our students. On behalf of the Wausau West community, congratulations and thanks for representing Wausau West and the Wausau School District in such a positive manner." Patricia Zemke. Patricia Patti is health education teacher at John Muir Middle School and was nominated for the resolution of commendation by John Muir School Principal Larry Mansell. Principal Mansell states, "Patti is only one of two health educators in the state to receive National Board certification and she is currently mentoring other health educators wishing to pursue certifications. Patty is the lead secondary health teacher for the Wausau School District and takes the lead in numerous curricular initiatives. She has given, she has given several presentations at the Wisconsin Health and Physical Education Teacher Convention as well as the Shape America National Convention. She is heavily involved in the Toward One Wausau Initiative, Toward One Wisconsin Initiative, developed My Choice, a Tier Two intervention to foster healthy resiliency in youth, and is involved in developing and sustaining numerous community partnerships, most recently with the Medical College of Wisconsin in Wausau, all in an effort to provide opportunities for students. Congratulations, Patty." And now we have the actual resolutions of commendation and we have a camera?
Sure do.
Okay, well Patricia, I will change orders and go with you first then. And this reads, "Whereas the Board of Education of the Wausau School District encourages employees, students, and patrons to participate in activities which will bring honor and esteem to themselves and to the Wausau School District and whereas Patricia Zemke, health education teacher at John Muir Middle School, earned National Board certification through the National Board for professional teaching standards and whereas the Board of Education deems that this accomplishment is meritorious and worthy of praise and commendation, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Wausau School District to publicly recognize said action and render it permanently to its minutes to be preserved for public posterity." Okay, Kate, do you want to?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Another? Another?
Do you want to bring your family out?
All right, kiddos.
How about there next to you, you can move over here.
They had to just wait while mommy types all last year.
Congratulations. Where did Elena go? Oh, there she is, sorry. I'm really glad you put this in big enough print that I can read without my glasses on. Yeah, I got it right here, just in case. Resolution of commendation. Whereas the Board of Education of the Wausau School District encourages employees, students, and patrons to participate in activities which will bring honor and esteem to themselves and to the Wausau School District and whereas Elena Clark, AP Psychology and World History teacher at Wausau West High School, earned National Board certification through the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards and whereas the Board of Education deems that this accomplishment is meritorious and worthy of praise and commendation, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Wausau School District to publicly recognize said action and render it permanently to its minutes to be preserved for public posterity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, okay. All right.
All right, Emily, do you want to bring them?
Henry, do you want to come up? Do you want to come up for a picture?
Yeah.
You're doing so good. Nice job, Pippa. Sit back, thank you. Do you want to stand by me? Okay. Sorry.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, hold my hand?
You ready?
Okay, look at the camera.
Nice job. You guys are welcome to stay.
Mr. President, just a reminder to take action on this item.
Oh. Okay. All right, so I seek a motion to award resolutions of commendation to Elena Clark and Patricia Zemke. All in favor, sing if somebody's saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good. Abstentions? Motion carries. Boy, would that be awful. All right, the next item on the agenda is Spotlight on Education, Wausau East International Baccalaureate. Mike Fisher and students, come on down. Right there, a thin microphone, please. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Mike Fisher. I'm the International Baccalaureate Coordinator at Wausau East High School. We're here to share with you some of the successes of the IB program at East High School and its importance to our school and students. So each of you has our packet. This is the official IB brochure, so it gives you a little explanation of the nuts and bolts in the front cover. You also have a review of the IB program at East and this is just a compilation of statistics and partly from our five-year review, which I'll talk about here in a minute. And then you have an article on 10 Reasons Why the IB Program is Ideal for University Preparation. So, this is something that you might take a look at later. And then an article from the Washington Post on Making Great. And then there's a, just a kind of a compilation of words and wisdom from our former IB students from emails that they've sent me that I've included. And then finally, the last thing is an article about Emily Witt, who just recently graduated from Eau Claire, which we'll all talk about later. We've got a lot of celebrations at East this year. This year marks the 50th anniversary of IB. In the late 1960s, a group of innovative educators saw a need for an international approach to education which would equip young people with the skills, attributes, and knowledge necessary to build a more peaceful world. The challenge was to create an education that was academically rigorous with the school admissions qualification that was accepted by the best universities around the world. So IB officially began with seven schools in 1968. This year also marks the 40th anniversary of IB at Wausau East High School. We joined IB in 1978 and were the 117th school to join. Currently, there are approximately 5,000 IB schools worldwide, so quite a growth. This past year also marks the completion of our five-year review by IB. Every five years, IB reviews member schools to make sure that they are living up to IB's principles and practices. A summary of those results is found in your packet. IB is an advanced placement program for juniors and seniors. Currently, 70% of our juniors and seniors are taking at least one IB course this year. We average 80 students who test each May with an 82% pass rate. We also average 10 to 12 diploma candidates. They have the opportunity to earn an IB diploma in addition to their Wausau School District diploma. These students must test in six IBs courses, one from each discipline. Three must be higher-level courses and three standard-level courses. In addition, they must complete the core, which consists of a 4,000-word senior thesis they call an extended essay, a theory of knowledge course, and a cast portfolio which requires each student to reflect on 18 months of community involvement, which also includes a community service project. The IB diploma is based on 45 points. Students can earn up to seven points for each of their six exams and then can earn three bonus points for their work on their 4,000-word research paper, MTOK paper. To earn the diploma, a student must score 24 points. Our students at East average 32 points with 95% of our candidates earning the IB diploma. This score becomes important because some schools, such as the University of Nebraska, recently have allowed students, sophomores standing with a score of 28 on their diploma and a $60,000 scholarship with a score of 30. Also, some schools, such as Johns Hopkins, will use the diploma for admissions purposes to their university. One of the parts of the program that I'm really proud of are student cast portfolios. So if you look in this next picture right here, you'll see some of the service projects that some of these students have done. And the one that I'm most proud of is, if you look in the center top, is the students who participated in our IB garden. Students put together a proposal where we worked with Tom McCormick and myself and they tended, grew and tended five raised beds of produce which they helped supply five needy families in the community with that fresh produce over the summer as part of our Zorlos Locker. And if you look down in the lower right, we have four students who went to an international peace conference, brought back what they learned from that conference, and created their project around five days of peace at East where they educated students at East of the importance of peace, not only like world peace, but mental peace and how that word peace is used in a social context. If you look in the next slide, there's, oop, I didn't include that one. There's one other slide in there where you saw a group of students who put on bone marrow drive at Wausau East as part of their service project. So tonight, I've brought three diploma candidates to talk about their IB experience. Here we have Nushua Chang. Down here, Julia Coons and Ayla Walter. So Nushua, why don't you start us off here?
Hello, my name is Nushua Chang and I'm currently a full IB diploma candidate. I'd like to just share my overall IB experience. Mr. Fisher here has already talked about the academics and how we strive for academic excellence. However, I'd like to focus more on the other opportunities that were offered through the IB program. First of all, for, for me personally, I'd say there's definitely a dramatic growth in knowledge, the perspective. You're able to just communicate with others who wish to attain the same level of academic rigor. And because of that, I'd say overall, you're just able to experience your surroundings, your environment with a more thoughtful and more open mindset. And I have an example for you. If you take middle school students and just have them transition to a post-secondary education, that isn't necessarily something that you'd be able to comprehend because the gap in knowledge from middle school to college is so vast and the four years of high school, specifically junior year and senior year, are so significant in just cultivating mind, cultivating your perspective on life, and I guess it allows your future to move in a way that you would never have previously.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm not as profound as Nushua is, but, so I just want to talk about like getting into IB and what it's done for me personally. When I first decided to go full IB, as we call it, or go and try to earn my IB diploma, Mr. Fisher told me that I could drop out in the first semester if I wanted and that was a consolation to me. I was very scared and nervous. It's a very, what's the word? It's looked upon very highly in Wausau East. The IB candidates are kind of, you know, the popular nerds, so to say. And so I was very scared. But once I got into it, I realized that IB is exactly what I needed to get myself into college and to get myself prepared for what I want to do in life. I always wanted to go to medical school ever since middle school. When I was in elementary school, I was like, I want to be a doctor, like yay, that sounds cool. And now, second semester, senior, hopefully about to earn my IB diploma, that's a reality for me. Like, I am very close to that. I am going to UW-Madison and I'm majoring in pharmacology, toxicology there with a pre-med focus and I might be able to finish my college years in three years with sophomore standing from IB credits and my tuition for Madison is significantly reduced due to them looking at my IB accomplishments and taking that into, like backing that into my tuition. So, the other thing that IB has helped me with is realizing that I can stand up to academic rigor. I can study for five hours a day and wake up the next morning and do it again. I can take five tests in one day and then do it all over the next week. And I can write a 4,000-word essay and do well on it and do it by myself and achieve all of these things just by having people around me like Mr. Fisher and all of my IB teachers to support me and also my IB family. We're kind of a clan and we support each other and without these people around me, without the IB program, my high school experience would not be the same.
Hi, I'm Ayla Walter. I'm also senior diploma candidate at Wausau East and along with the academic vigor and challenge IB has offered, it has also given me a family and a support group within school and I think it's one of the things I really value and cherish the most and it has given me a lot of opportunities in regards to college. I'll be double, double majoring in history and German with a focus of high school education and I have applied to Hamilton University, Montana State, Lawrence, Purdue, University of Nebraska, and Rice University down in Houston and I've been accepted into all of them and I'm still waiting on Rice though. And I have been one of the lucky people who have been accepted into Nebraska and because I'm a full diploma candidate, I received a $60,000 scholarship to go there and pursue my interests there and I just think IB, it sounds scary at first, but it definitely is worth it in the end with everything you go through and it really teaches you how to reach out to your teachers and not be afraid to explore the depths of knowledge and what you can do with yourself in that. Thank you.
Ausgesicht. This is our sehr schönen Gmacht. So in conclusion, the woman that you see in the lower left, and I don't know if you hit it one more time, there might be an orange slide there, right, is, that's Emily Witt and that's the article that you have in your packet. She's a 2016 Wausau East IB full diploma graduate. She earned 33 credits at UW Eau Claire for her IB work. She graduated in two and a half years with a marine biology degree while participating as an intern in a project in Costa Rica and at the Charles Darwin Research Center just last summer in the Galapagos Islands. She's now continuing her postgraduate work in Australia on a whaling ship somewhere or anything. So she's just one of, an example of one of the many success stories that come through the IB program at East. And if you'd like, you can read about her full story, it's really interesting article. So I'd like to thank you for allowing us to present this evening and if you'd like more information on the IB program at East, I've included a couple of internet addresses.